All right, let's call a meeting to order. Good evening, and this is a special meeting budget session, June 11, 2014. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here. And there are sandwiches in the back, in case you happen to walk by and miss them. So, please, thank you, Jennifer. Public comment on items not on this agenda? Would anyone like to address the council on items not on this agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go right into conduct of business, which is the study session to review the 2014-15 City Managers Recommended Operating Budget for General Funds, Special Revenue Funds, and Enterprise Funds.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is the second of our budget study sessions to review the operating budgets for fiscal year 1415. We're very pleased to, again, have your attention to what we consider to be a very important topic. Tonight, I have a couple of introductory and logistical remarks, and that is to note that our cable television staff has really done a heroic effort here to produce this meeting tonight, given that we're having to juggle a little bit with the fact that the board meeting of the San Bruno Park School District is also being televised tonight, which makes us a little bit limited on equipment and needing to juggle our staff as well. So, we're going to be sharing the microphone. I just want to make sure all of you who are speaking tonight realize that we'll have to do a little bit of shuffling as each speaker is on deck. And then just to thank the cable television staff for their heroic effort to get this all set up for us tonight. Tonight, continuing the conversation we had on Monday night, we're going to focus on the expenditure side of the budget. I think we did, we had a pretty thorough discussion on Monday night that focused primarily on the bigger picture financial issues, and in particular, the revenue situation. Tonight, we are talking primarily about the expenditure side, and a little bit differently than in the recent previous years, where we have conducted this study session as a series of presentations or mini-presentations by each of our operating departments. We're planning to do this presentation tonight a little bit differently, including situating our speakers around sort of a big table. It was, rather than having people come up one after the other to a podium. And we're planning to present to you tonight around a number of topic areas that we have, over the course of the last few days, identified as being the, those priorities that emerge from and that are addressed in our operating budgets. So, far from trying to constrain your conversation, your information sharing and understanding, we're trying to enhance our presentation in a manner that we hope will be interesting and useful to you. And again, we encourage any questions and comments that the City Council may have. We do not, everybody who is here tonight does not necessarily have a planned speaking role, but all of our staff that are present are certainly available to answer questions or engage in whatever conversation you would like to have. I'm going to start by giving a, sort of a bigger picture overview, and that I hope will frame the discussion going forward. And then, again, we have selected a number of departments and, to be represented by their department head, to focus on a number of what we consider to be key items. It's our intent in that presentation also to weave in information about those expenditures for supplemental or enhancement items that are detailed in the budgets and that are, that were summarized in our conversation on Monday evening. And again, if we don't highlight something in particular, it's not because we don't consider it important, it's, we're building off the foundation that we laid on Monday night, as well as with the written budget, that we rely on you having developed a good understanding of those topic areas that are presented and that you will have, that you have a particular interest in. So, moving forward to the, sort of the bigger picture overview, this budget, in our work program is focused primarily around activities that maintain and enhance the community quality of life in all sectors, the business sector, in the residential sector, and that are intended to make this a place where those activities flourish, are economically viable and sustainable, and in general, make this a place that people want to be and feel that their public services are well implemented under your policy guidance. We propose to address these, the conversation tonight around four primary topics. In particular, program enhancements, areas of our service delivery that are receiving special attention in the budget and in our work program. Business and economic development, again, being an important foundational activity of this organization, one that we touched on a bit on Monday night. And something that we call community problem solving. In this area, we're talking about a number of different types of programs that can generally be understood as addressing issues across the board, in terms of public safety, in terms of what might more traditionally be understood as code enforcement, or, again, all contributing to the overriding community quality of life. And then we have a number of initiatives that we addressed to the City Council's attention last year as part of our budget presentations, having to do with process improvement, customer service improvement, and efficiency in delivery of public services. And we have a very short computer demonstration for you tonight to show some of the, to illustrate some of the initiatives that we're talking about. Just before we move to the first speakers, I wanted to acknowledge the effort and the creative spirited teamwork of the department head team that led us to this, a little bit different type of presentation. I appreciate the contributions of all of the departments and the shared creative energy that I think, on an overriding basis, is the foundation for not only the way that this budget is put together, the way that the presentation will be unrolled for you tonight, but also, in, on a daily basis, the way that work gets done. So, for example, in our community problem solving category that we're talking to you about tonight, we don't view the types of issues that the City Council is concerned about with neighborhood issues, where people are not maintaining their property well enough, or that there may be violations of our occupancy codes, or there may be undesirable activities going on in the streets within areas of our community. We don't view those in isolation or as a single department's individual responsibility, but as a collective responsibility of the organization and of the teams that are represented by your staff. So, we hope that that comes through a little bit tonight in our presentation. Before we turn to our first category, I just want to, again, sort of celebrate and give a little bit of perspective to some of the things that are on the horizon for us. Again, this is our centennial year, great opportunity to celebrate who we are, where we're going. We have some great activities planned over this next year. September 27th, a Community Day in the Park, to celebrate community-wide. Enjoy our park, enjoy some wonderful activities. And then December 6th, a Community Gala, which we'll hold up at Skyline College, to celebrate in a more formal way. 100 years of this city's history and the beginning of our next century. And then, the other really exciting thing that will come forward over this next year is the full independent operation of our San Bruno Community Foundation, which is quickly getting up and running and preparing to take over, within the next several months, custody of the $70 million PG&E restitution funds. And to begin, it's awesome and a very, very exciting task of determining, beginning to determine how those funds should be deployed within the community. So, we've completed some great work, a lot of it, again, building the foundation for that effort to really take off during the next 12-month period. So, we're very excited about that. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn over to the fire chief, and we'll have to pass the microphone down to him to begin our presentation. While we're passing the microphone, if there's any questions, right up with that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I get the privilege of coming to you as, unfortunately, the department that's coming with the biggest increase in the budget, and we have an $800,000 increase, as you know. And we're looking at, last year started, first year of a three-year plan of what we look at as enhancements to the department, and bringing us from, obviously, a level of where we had some financial constraints over the past few years, into now, we're coming out of it where we're able to address some of our needs and bring it up to a little bit higher level than we'd like it to be at. And so, now having the resources to do so, I would like to go over with you as far as the $800,000 and where that's going. The first $609,000 that we're looking at has to do with, basically, contractual increases, and those increases have to do with labor contracts, the addition of the Emergency Preparedness Battalion Chief position, the internal service allocation funds, which we discussed a little bit on Monday evening. And that had to do with our, for our fire, the self-insurance rates and the technology rates going up, about $80,000 total. The shared fire chief and deputy chief, the shared training, the shared battalion chief overtime, all that increase came up to about $600,000 of the $800,000. The next piece of that is the overtime. The overtime increase is about $96,000, almost $97,000. Primarily, the overtime increase this year is coming from the first six months of the fiscal year will be, will have an opening. So, that vacancy is going to have to be filled with overtime for the first six months. So, that costs about $76,000 to fill that vacancy. Unfortunately, we're starting the year off with an individual on disability leave, and we expect that person back within the first few months, but that's going to set us back about $20,000 as well. So, in all, it's about $96,000, $97,000 that we'll be looking at as far as increasing, as far as overtime. Our apparatus, equipment, and facilities are three other areas that we started addressing last year in the budget and continue to do so in this budget. We are looking at finishing up our hose replacement. Our hose replacement did call last year for $55,000. The council elected to go with $80,000 to be proactive on it and be ahead of it. So, that three-year plan turned into a two-year plan, and due to Ben Minkin, one of our firefighters, ended up writing a grant. We got accepted for the grant. It's about a $70,000 grant with about a $7,500 match from the fire department, and we're going to be able to outfit the rest of our hose, and we'll be able to complete that task this year for about $75,000 to $12,500. So, we're also looking at adding a Lucas device, which is $18,000, and that is actually a device that performs manual chest compressions. Studies have shown that it actually is much more impressive as far as the numbers and success and decreased mortality rates by having this machine and using it than doing manual chest compressions with our arms. So, we'll be having one of those machines if the council approves the budget. Reserve equipment, our reserve equipment is down, so we're going to spend about $28,000 to outfit both our reserve engines with equipment that's not hosed. This happens to be saws, thermal imaging cameras, other pieces of equipment that are needed that we've basically taken off the reserve equipment to put on our frontline units to make sure that they were up and staffed with proper equipment. And the last part is just maintaining our general engine and truck equipment supply. And so, we didn't have a budget for that, so we're creating a budget for that this year. So, if we have equipment that goes down, breaks, for whatever reasons, we can place it throughout the year. And the other two is apparatus and facilities. So, it's apparatus maintenance and also facility costs. The apparatus is about $9,000 as far as maintenance, just because we have some aging apparatus, which we are going to address in the CIP when that comes around. But we do expect some increased maintenance costs because of the aging of our equipment. Facilities, that's basically not the physical facility itself that we're addressing in this with the $8,000. This has to do with, basically, the offices, the bedrooms, the kitchens, and what's there as far as whether it's, if we have two stations, folks live there, obviously, 24 hours a day. We have seven individuals at one, three at another. And so, that goes anywhere from eating utensils, plates, you name it, to beds, mattresses, and so on. The last piece of it is our succession planning, which is about $70,000. This has to do with the hiring of three new firefighters. It costs about $17,000 per firefighter to hire the firefighters, educate the firefighters, put them through the academy, and to also outfit them with safety gear. Our MOU allows for about $1,800 per person, $1,800 to $2,000 per person, which is about $52,000 in total. But from past experience, we only use about 33% of that. So, we've put in the budget about $17,000 for succession planning. All of our chief officers will be gone within five years, so we want to make sure that our captains are getting, they're getting proper fire training, but we need to actually address more of the administrative piece with our future management individuals. So, there's also some reorganization of line items. If you're looking through the budget, you saw some major increases or some major decreases in categories through the help with the finance. We went through it, and we kind of reorganized and put some line items in different places. So, sorry for that confusion if you look at it. The biggest ones that were in there were other services. Was it $142,000? If you look at it now, it only says $20,000 in that account. It's not that we're saving that money, it's that we moved it into a different line item. So, we did that in a few areas, just basically to clean it up a little bit, and this is just part of our process we're going through. And with that, is there any questions?
Questions?
Yeah.
So, going forward, are there any shortcuts you have with other departments?
No, as far as us, what we're doing with this grant and going, we're actually going to be changing our four-inch, large diameter hose to five-inch to be compatible with our partners. So, that and this will now address all our needs that we need as far as equipment, this year and next year, as far as putting in the budget.
Fire? Irene?
I was just, what are we doing about fire hydrants themselves? Which the program do we, is that you or him?
I'm going to probably have to add, turn that one over, because our fire, we don't do, it's Public Works that does the work and on the maintenance, and I don't know if you want to answer that now?
Oh, I'll say that.
Okay.
Do the chair?
A few questions, Chief. As far as the battalion chief, the administrative one, that, there was an increase, correct me, of about $120,000, but that also was not to the extent it would have been because we were using the preparedness coordinator position and grouping that together.
That is correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. The hose you triggered on, why there is less in the budget than was anticipated by the council from last year, but then congratulations to Ben and your department for getting the grant. I wondered if there was any type of consideration given right now, the department, my understanding is we have shifts of 10, 10, 9. And if we went to 10, 10, 10, then we would be able to take care of the situations when we had illnesses, vacations, unforeseen worker comp, work-related injuries, retirements, and items like that, which may help defray the, or curtail the overtime. So, is there any thought about doing that as we once had?
That is definitely an option for the council. If the council wanted to go, our minimum staffing is nine per shift, and we have, as Councilmember, Vice Mayor Medina just pointed out, we do have 10, 10, and 9. We could go to 10, 10, and 10. At this point, the first year of employment, for the most part, is probably cheaper to hire a new firefighter, but from those second steps on, it's actually less expensive to the city to actually just pay the overtime rate. And we are going to go through a large turnover, and as we go through the turnover, through the direction of Ms. Jackson, City Manager, to say, we don't want to get behind, so we're at this and this hiring of three individuals, we will actually be at full staff of 10, full staff at 10, and we want to make sure we keep at least above minimum staffing, because we only have a fire academy once a year, it's in September. So, such as we have a vacancy now, we cannot hire an individual, because there's no academy that's going through until September.
Okay. And, City Manager, you look like you're looking for a mic.
No, I was just going to say, it would be great if I could have a mic handy. I don't, I don't need it right this second.
We were just planning ahead.
I was wondering if you could pass that one down, so we don't have to pass so much. Sorry. I do.
Oh, okay. So, okay, so that was into my next, is that we are being proactive, and if we know there is a retirement, we are then moving the ball to, I know the academy only happens a certain period, but so we don't find ourselves behind to where we have mandatories, where we have staff, or we get into a situation with workers comp, or as other things that you just alluded to, because for six months, we're going to be spending, it says here in the budget, 95, you're alluding to more like $97,000, because we don't have potentially the 10, 10, 10. So, I'd like to have back at the next meeting when we have this, is that consideration and thought process. My understanding also is, if I'm not mistaken, under the internal government, other line items, 7069, it's up $157,000. You talked about things we're readjusted within the budget, I don't know if that's where it came. City Manager talked about coming back at a later time for a review of Millbrae San Bruno, a share to maybe a 60, 40, potentially. That would mean that would be an added $250,000 eventually, that's for a full year, probably, to that item already, that's already at $394,000, if I'm correct.
So, that is fairly close. It'll actually be about $225,000, because we already have the battalion chief overtime factored in there, so it'd be an additional increase of about $225,000, but almost a $250,000.
Okay. And how do you see our stations and department, as far as its equipment being safety, ready, updated, prepared, not only in the emergency service vehicles, but anything that we're dealing with as far as to our residents in the community?
I think we're on an excellent path of where we're headed and going, and we're addressing our needs. And I think that's a very positive steps that we're taking, and I think the path we're on, and the three-year plan, at the end of the three years, we're going to be in great shape.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. As the City Manager mentioned, she'd like this to be interactive, so please feel free to interrupt me at any point if you have a question or a remark. I'd like to elaborate on something Connie mentioned about the centennial. We have two other events that will be occurring here in the next month or two. One is the scavenger hunt on July 20th, and the history walk in partnership with the San Mateo County History Museum on August 16th. And for more information on the centennial, you can go to the website dedicated to the centennial, which is SanBruno100. It's the number 100, not spelled out, but numerical 100, SanBruno100.org. As the Community Services Department prepared our proposed budget for fiscal year 1415, there were two overarching principles that we focused on. The first was to ensure that we responded in a meaningful way to the interests and requests that the community was making for broader opportunities to participate in existing or expanded programs. And then also, to preserve and maintain the city's buildings and facilities. And so, the PowerPoint presentation that you received last evening, under the slide, Proposed General Fund Service Level Enhancements, had a number of positions or initiatives that the Community Services Department is bringing forward for your consideration. And what I wanted to do, instead of talking about those positions, is just give you a context for how those will help us deliver additional programming to the community. We took advantage of a bittersweet opportunity with the departure of Jenny Tucker, to look at that position and, in fact, leverage the financial resources that we had through the supervisor position and create a second position, to downgrade that supervisor position and create a coordinator, and then a second coordinator. And those two positions are fully funded, using additional revenue we anticipate generating through the expansion of camps, after-school adventures program, the aquatics program, as well as, the aquatics program, I think I just said that, I'm sorry, the sports program. So, it's our objective to respond to the wait lists that we've been experiencing for more than a year from the community who have wanted to enroll in these various activities, and we just haven't had the capacity to allow for that. And I think with the addition of the coordinator position, we will now have the staff in place that can provide the oversight, as well as a small amount of additional part-time wages that we've requested to support the sports programs. In addition to that, you see a request for a Parks Maintenance Worker One position, and as you saw in last night's City Council presentation by the Public Services Director, in, since 2006, we have improved 23 of the 28 median segments along El Camino and San Bruno Avenue. And that additional level of improvement, to make sure that we keep it at its high level, now that they have lapsed in their warranty period by the contractor, require additional resources in the Parks Division to provide that maintenance. And so, all of these initiatives and the positions that you see before you are really intended to better serve the community, or to ensure that we're preserving the enhancements and improvements already approved by the City Council. That's a quick summary of what you've seen in the Community Services budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
On the, first start with the medians. So, we're asking, some of the primary reason is to be able to maintain the medians. And through the history, when we were redoing the medians, they were supposed to be more efficient, less staff time, and with the cooperation of working with staff that were actually in the field doing the work, and now, we're being told, at this point, that we actually need somebody to help increase staff headcount in order to maintain what should have been easier and more efficient.
I'm going to insert myself and answer that question. This is an issue that has evolved over a fairly long period of time, going back, if I remember correctly, the first medians that we actually improved were those on the upper portion of San Bruno Avenue. And if you, if you think back to the condition of some of those medians, and I recall the conversation that we had at that time, was that, in essence, they were so bare and so deteriorated, that there was essentially no real maintenance activity occurring, which is actually the condition of those medians that continue to be in place in that condition between 280 and the first median above El Camino along San Bruno Avenue. So, you are correct, Vice Mayor Medina, that the medians have been landscaped with a low-maintenance, low-water type of landscape treatment, but that does not translate into no maintenance. And in fact, the, the need to maintain a acceptable quality of appearance has expanded the work effort of the Parks Maintenance Division pretty substantially over the past, I want to say it's been approximately five or six years that we have been in the business of upgrading the median islands, maybe, maybe a little bit longer than that. The second issue that has occurred is that actually, during that time period, our Parks Maintenance staff has been reduced as a result of ongoing budget issues. We've taken advantage of the fact that the one year We've taken advantage of the fact that the one-year establishment period applies every time we do a project. We've finally reached that point, where the situation is not continuously sustainable anymore. So, we believe that this is an issue that's been on your radar screen now for some period of time. We've held off, essentially as long as we can, and the only viable option, now that we are essentially responsible for all of the improvements, or about to be responsible, I believe January is the last, January coming up is the last scheduled takeover of median islands. We, we believe that this is a necessary and timely, and time-deferred, as long as possible, initiative to maintain the quality at the level that you're currently experiencing.
I would agree that we do want level of quality. I think in the Great Separation, it was clearly defined, there'd be X dollars that would be required by our action on an ongoing basis, and I think that helps when we make well-rounded decisions. So, I'm trying to think back in my history, but it's been a while, is that when we were doing the medians, to say, "Okay, well, we can do these, and more efficient, more this, more aesthetically," and yet, keep in mind down the road, there's going to be this ongoing cost that we must bear. So, I think, in the Great Separation, I very much appreciate that, because I think it's very clearly and defined, you want the fountain, it's gonna cost this much, you want the vegetation and landscaping, it's gonna cost you this much. And we have an understanding too of our action, that there is gonna be an ongoing, shall we say, charge to the city. On the, some of the positions in the recreation, have wanted to bring them from manager to service coordinators. I believe the comment was-
So, I think, in the Great Separation, I very much appreciate that, because I think it's very clearly and defined, you want the fountain, it's gonna cost this much, you want the vegetation and landscaping, it's gonna cost you this much. And we have an understanding too of our action, that there is gonna be an ongoing, shall we say, charge to the city. On the, some of the positions in the recreation, have wanted to bring them from manager to service coordinators. I believe the comment was made, that in recreation, there would be, requested one less supervisor, add two coordinators, add no, to maximize that opportunity, and not have any additional cost. There would still be an additional cost to make that, that headcount change, if I'm not mistaken.
Vice Mayor, we actually believe that we're gonna be able to generate revenue to offset that additional cost completely, based on the experience that we've had on waitlists. If we're able now to satisfy that demand, that will generate revenue, which we estimate and is included in the budget projections for the fifteen, for the fourteen, fifteen budget, that will make that cost neutral for the city.
But as far as to the bottom line of the budget, it adds to the budget.
Yes, it does, in absolute-
Headcount, and it adds dollars.
Correct.
It's not, it's not cost-neutral, because nothing's there. So, the person, two people could start, there is not paying for itself at that point. So, and if the programs aren't successful, or for whatever reason they need to be canceled, then there is not a cost-neutral. There is an additional cost to the city.
Correct.
Okay. I was wondering, in the, in the, and the reason I said this, because when I saw the senior center one, it was like nineteen thousand dollars savings, and I was thinking, okay, well, that didn't, the math, that's where I was trying to figure it out. I was wondering, where do we perceive these coordinator positions, where do we perceive those as far as within the organization, the levels of the higher responsibility that they're going to oversee? What type of experience level does, is it required to have that position? For example, what I'm looking at, as you mentioned Jenny, so, she oversaw the pool as a manager. So now, are we, for that sake, saying the coordinator would come in at that level, oversee that infrastructure, as well as that staffing component, liability, risk, and ensuring our community that the youth and the program and everything is safe and sound?
We've gone back and diligently looked at the job description and description of duties, that would be appropriate for the coordinator position, and we feel comfortable that that classification level would provide that level of skill. And we will be very diligent when we do the recruitment, when we conduct the recruitment, to ensure that we hire people that have skills that are compatible with the job description, and compatible with the duties that we will be assigning them.
Is there an example of what higher level of responsibility one might just be assigned off? I mean, not, nothing's in concrete.
Sure.
You're not signing any contract, I'm just curious.
So, we've gone-
If it's too early, no worries.
No, no, not at all. We've actually gone through, and looked at precisely what the duties of both coordinators would be, and will be presenting, putting that into the job announcement. That includes, Danielle's very diligent, but I actually already have it. So, the first coordinator would be responsible for adult sports, youth sports, special events were a portion of them, the triathlon, concerts in the park, the father-daughter dance, or maybe I should say father-child dance, and the Goblin Grotto, the sports camps, the social nights, and some marketing. The second coordinator would be responsible, as you pointed out, Vice Mayor, for the aquatics program, contract classes, development and preparation of the activity guide, and the remaining special events, and I'm just gonna do a quick promotion here, the holiday tree lighting, the polar bear plunge, the flea markets, the holiday boutique, family overnight, and visit from Santa. So, just, just to reiterate, we do, we fully recognize that a higher-level classification was responsible for some of these programs. Some of these programs are actually being transitioned from the superintendent, and some of these responsibilities are being transitioned from the supervisor. But we fully believe, and we would not proceed with this recommendation if we didn't believe this, we fully believe that this scope of responsibility is commensurate with the coordinator classification.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause, and I do see, and I know when we had a budget, one time when we talked about not filling a director at the library, and a director for Parks and Recreation at that time, even I brought up then, as far as more activities, more programs, we're diminishing staff, we now are at the senior center, taking a manager, making that a coordinator, there may be a great explanation for it. But again, I worry about providing the service level to the residents, having good qualified individuals and staff to service all the needs, and be at a diverse level. So, people in management level, I would perceive, could handle in the coordinator, the supervisor, and the manager level, so therefore you have more ability when you have people that are out, sick, or if somebody should obviously take another opportunity. So I have some concerns, as far as us and the staffing level, and the titles, and the experience level, that are necessary and required to meet the expectations of a very vibrant senior center, and the athletic programs, and programs that are held and done by Parks and Rec.
Oh, so, are you-
Yes, I, well, are you suggesting we should add, make two supervisor positions, instead
of changing a supervisor to two coordinates?
Coordinators.
Coordinators?
Well, you currently have two supervisors, is to take one supervisor, which you do get them, two individuals, so that's, looks very good, but I always worry about just the, the level, and I still worry about us having enough staff to meet the needs of all that we're asking, expecting. I know we have a Centennial, and I know it won't happen for another hundred years, so I don't think we'll have to worry about that, but, but at the same time, I know it's stretching staff, and I know there's a lot being placed, and with the current staffing and summer programs here, I just know that at points, I think we're, I just don't want anything short-changed along the road, and so, I do think the expertise of certain positions and titles, supervisor to coordinator, are very different, I think, as far as the expertise and the level that it brings. So, that's what I'm wondering, because we're reducing a manager, I'm sorry, a supervisor at the senior center, we're reducing a supervisor at the recreation center, so we are reducing too, so I'm trying to understand that, that's all.
Okay.
So, provide us assurances, that you, that you are improving on the service, to both the facility, to the senior center, and to, you know, recreation customers? Because I do recognize that, not only are we adding programs, we've improved programs, we've expanded programs. The staff is, you know, whether, whether you've grown the staff or not, the staff is doing more in existing programs, it's just that noticeable. And, you know, and we're getting a lot of comments from the community about it. And so, I guess the concern that the Vice Mayor has is, are we still stretching ourselves too thin? Are you, are you sacrificing, you know, stronger leadership and stronger decision-making, or stronger, you know, level of service to, you know, staff service to, I guess, just extra bodies? So.
So certainly, what we want to do is respond to the community's interest, to participate in programs. We do not, and would not, put staff or the community in the position of delivering those services, and receiving those services by people who were challenged or not qualified in doing that. And as we conduct the recruitment for the coordinator classification, whether it be for the senior division or for the recreation division, if we have any concern, that we're not getting a caliber of candidates to fill those positions that are commensurate with the responsibilities, then we would certainly reassess our recommendation. I am confident, though, from the quality of the part-time people that are working in the recreation center currently, who have expressed an interest, should the City Council choose to approve the coordinator request, that we will have a very robust and highly qualified pool of candidates, both internally and externally, because we would certainly seek candidates from all over.
If I could just add, the biggest single constraint that we have to the delivery of the programs at the volume that the community desires, is numbers of people to adequately supervise and manage those programs. And while I would never argue against and agree enthusiastically with the Vice Mayor's representation, that a, essentially a higher level of staff qualification or expertise is a benefit to our programs, we believe that this is a sound recommendation, both consistent with the City Council's fiscal policy, as well as consistent with the community's demand for the additional programming. And frankly, in a funny way, it does allow, and we would not, as the director indicated, would never sacrifice, knowingly sacrifice, the integrity of the supervisory skill set or function. It, in a funny way, it frees up the capacity of both the superintendent, as well as the supervisor, to pay some attention to those programs, which are managed by another individual on a direct day-to-day basis. So, again, we believe that it is the quantity, in addition to the quality or the expertise of the staff, that is really, a very tight constraint to our ability to, to deliver the programs that the community is interested in.
Good. Plus, the department head would have to answer to it also, in the end.
The department head always has to answer to everything, in the end, yes.
Congrat-
And in the beginning, yes.
Congratulations. I just wanted to clarify that, yes, as far as the maintenance of the medians, I actually been on that subcommittee since its inception, along with former Mayor Franzella. And I distinctly remember the questions, and he made the questions, and we, we actually brought in maintenance staff, to give us their input on how to improve maintenance of those, of those medians. And we, we knew that we were gonna go, move forward with, with improving the, all the medians, but did not have a clear vision of how we were going to, you know, withstand, you know, the added load of, you know, maintaining them. But I just wanted to say, you know, and looking forward to, you know, community developments concerns also, the medians, the look of this town, that's what we answer to. That's what we, you know, get a lot of the criticism, and, but that's also where we get the most pride. So, when you can drive through, and people drive through this town, and you, you know, you stop at a light, and you, you know, and you don't see litter, you see nicely maintained medians, you know, and you don't see the, you know, that like you see in other towns and stuff. So, I think that's something that, when you said in the beginning, this is something that we all have to address. I think it starts with certain departments, and then it trickles down to the other departments, at least to communicate that we've got, you know, some areas. So, very proud of our park maintenance staff, you know, it's, I drive through that park numerous times a day, and just amazed at how it always gets turned over with all the activity, so.
Thank you, I will pass that along.
Yeah.
My department focus, and this whole series focus next year, will be on the delivery of the capital improvement program. What needs to be done, and when needs to be done, already was approved, and by you, and is very well known, the biggest challenge will be, how the city will be, will be able to deliver on our pre-established need. And that's why you see in our recommendation, a additional position for enhancing that capacity in the city, to be able to deliver the capital improvement program. Is a proposal to add a additional associate engineer, who would focus on water and sewer project delivery. Besides the focus on project delivery, also with our operational and maintenance resources, the focus is in two major area. One is to further the available information on our system. All of the system information on sewer, water, and storm is in place, and the next step is to develop the system information for our roads. And the set goal for last year, how you see from our goals for next year, is to inventory our regulatory science citywide, as the first phase of that, that next step. And also, for our storm system, to inventory the private volley gutters, the city has lots of complaints, lots of question about how those are maintained, and that's why this is an important initiative in our part. All, the, the next major focus will be on enhancing and developing new proactive, preventive type of programs. And I will just highlight a few for, will be implementing street sign replacement, and also a street light pole replacement program for all of the city streets. Also, will be, was developed, a five-year culvert inspection, and repair program for our storm system. And this will start this year, and you saw in our request, a budget request for the enhancement of, for additional allocation for, to support that program. Just also, as a follow-up to our discussion last, last night, you will see a supplemental request to include also in our operating budget, the cost for a rain study for our storm system. It's not included yet, but before the final approval of the budget, you will have the opportunity to make a decision on. Also, a, the third initiative, here you see a budget request, is for threshold reduction program, enhancing the cleanness of the city, and was included additional time, is a very successful program in place now, right now, having a half-time person going around downtown focus, but around the whole city, picking up the trash. The recommendation is to double the time allocated for this activity, and enhance the quality of life throughout the city. On the same line, with preventive program development for water, also was, will be developed, a corrosion prevention program, which will be, which is included in our- a corrosion prevention program, which is included in our budget, and also valve exercise program. Those programs does not necessarily require additional fund request. Those will be achieved through resource allocation internally and without additional fund request. But this goes to your question also, Irene, with valve exercise will be enhanced in the department focus on including fire hydrant maintenance program. And also for, I would mention also, the development and implementation of an ongoing video inspection program for our sewer system. And you already approved organizational assessment to really support this very aggressive shift in the focus of, in preventive, more preventive activities to minimize costs overall. That organizational assessment study will be done first for sewer, and then if that will be successful, which is our expectation that will be, then will be extended to other functional area of the department. And just to, not to leave this summary without any centennial connection, and I don't have any other, but I was surprised when I read the city manager's letter, and I saw that I have the same birthday than the city. And I never knew about this connection, which is a very unique one. I am not sure. Sometimes I think that I have the same.
Good for a hundred. Or ninety-nine.
If you have any question, and certainly I have support here, if I will not be able to answer some questions, they will have me out.
Well, I just, it's interesting, the connection with centennial, that I spent a lot of time on Facebook, and there's this one person in this community who has access to these old photos. And it's neat, interesting seeing fifty, seventy-five, almost a hundred-year-old photos of this community, and you see the resemblance and how things have changed. Today, I noticed he posted a photo of the downtown and these culverts that are the bane of our improvements. The culverts, for those that don't know, are on each side of the street, and they are where, they are positioned where we would like to plant trees. So you can't plant trees in culverts, so that's why we have pots. And our trees are not growing too well in the pots. And so, when you say right-of-way issues, I mean, at some point really soon, especially with transit quarters plan, and hopefully the increase of interest in our downtown because of the Caltrain station, we have really got to look at what to do with our infrastructure on San Mateo Avenue. I think it's something that most of this council has been faced with, and we haven't been able to bite the bullet. We spent quarter, three quarters of a million dollars putting pots and improvements to a bad situation.
I would like to mention what was our discussion at the subcommittee, that the city, in my humble opinion, will have a very unique opportunity to incorporate that intent is, in our first priority project, and mandated by our agreement with the regional board and the baykeepers, is the replacement of the culvert on San Mateo. Then, that replacement of that culvert on San Mateo is included in our next three years, five years plan. And the design should start yesterday to be able, that will be a very complex project. And replacing the sewer and the water on San Mateo will be a very, very unique opportunity to really think that through, through a holistic redesign on San Mateo and achieving whatever that transit corridor vision using this project as the venue to make that to happen.
Just in closing, I realize this is your last budget, and it just seems that you just got here, but to look at the list of things that you have accomplished through your department, very proud, very thankful for your service here. Thank you, Clara.
Anyone else? Chair?
Clara, as Ken already indicated, this being your last budget, and I've already, last night submitted several questions to the city manager for that department in the hole, which we'll get back to me. And considering you share the same birthday as the city of San Bruno, I have no questions.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. But any...
You won't be here for it, so I thought I'd give it to you early.
I want to know if any of the department heads have the same birthday as the city of San Bruno.
Or are retiring? Or announced retirement?
But I will be happy to answer any question that you might have.
And yours happened, so thank you for that, but I did submit that, and so, but they require a little more detailed information.
Yes.
Good. Anyone else? All right. Steve?
Larry's happy he doesn't have to speak tonight.
It's kind of like in an island over there.
So our agenda says that we're moving on to business and economic development, but before we do that, we would like to talk a little bit about some enhancements we've been planning on doing, and then we'll dovetail right into the development portion. This past year, city council approved a policy change for a staff increase for after-hours service, so we added a second person after hours. We increased our funding for that in our overtime funding, and it looks like we won't spend the increase, but it's there. And this is so that customers with telephone service can expect the same-day service, even after-hours, service call after hours, or on a weekend if their service is out. We also have customers that just have internet or just have TV, and if that service is out, we will also respond same-day for those folks. Of course, any outages that we have require response, and if it's an area outage, and so we also respond to that. And having two people, two standby technicians, has increased our uptime, so we're grateful for that. So that was a good enhancement. We continue to do that and look for ways to even improve that. As part of the city's website design, which you'll hear about later, San Bruno Cable also will be doing an upgrade in our site as well. The ability to pay online, print-out channel guides, communicate via emails, we already have those features and functions on our website, and you can check your own account and that type of thing. But we'd like to take some advantage of more interactive processes that are going to be coming our way. So that means maybe service applications can be filled out online. We also have, if you want phone service, there's a whole set of applications for that, and maybe even service requests, service call requests could be done through that. So we'd like to incorporate some of those features into our site and change the look as well. So that's something we'll be looking at, and we have budgeted for that as well. In response to customer requests and even just the industry trends, San Bruno Cable has been working with several companies or looking at several companies to offer mobile device viewing, or what they call in the industry "TV everywhere." And that is the ability to look at programming on your iPad or your iPhone or other mobile device by going to the programmer's site and logging in. And when you log into the site, it verifies that you are, in this case, a San Bruno Cable customer, and it says, "What level of service do you have?" "I have expanded basic." Okay, well, if you have expanded basic, you do get ESPN, and if ESPN offers that, and we offer that, then you can watch ESPN on your mobile device. We actually offer ESPN3 today on mobile devices, and we offered, we did the Winter Olympics and Summer Olympics a couple of years ago on mobile devices with a different contract setup, but we're really trying to broaden that scope and offer it to, for more programmers and more folks. And we've looked at it, there's been some challenges for a small cable company, and we don't, we aren't the Comcast or the Time Warner. We don't have our own app yet. But there are ways that we can do this through the national cooperative, TV cable cooperative that we belong to. They have developed some technology to allow us to do so, and we're working with our billing company for the authentication piece to work with them. So we're working through those challenges, but that's something we definitely will offer in the next fiscal year. And I think it's a great retention tool, but it's also a great marketing tool, just to let people know that we're doing that. And again, it's something that folks are asking for, so we'll be doing that. Moving into some business developments, home security systems traditionally use telephone lines, the old copper telephone lines. Since the advent of VoIP, which is voice-over IP telephone service, and over the past couple of years, those systems have integrated into the cable system infrastructure. Comcast offers a home security system through a third-party vendor. In fact, Al Johnson, our system engineer sitting behind me, ordered it so he could evaluate how the technician set it up. He wasn't that happy about that. He's looking at its reliability, the ability to look in the house when he's not there, the other features, and then costs as well. To determine the value of a product like that for San Bruno Cable, it has much more bandwidth on it. But fiber to the home is what everybody's building, because in the end, it's cheaper to build and you get a much better product. We've been considering a fiber-to-the-home project and been working with Connie, the city manager, to determine how this might be accomplished and how we could roll this out in the future. Some of the benefits are just faster internet speeds, more reliable internet speeds. You know, we can almost guarantee an internet speed where today you get up to a certain level, but we could guarantee it like we do for our businesses. We guarantee them the speed. There's a lot of home-based businesses in San Bruno. A lot of folks work from home, they do downloading, they're big files sometimes. The service we have today works, we have several levels, it does work, but fiber would make it much more reliable. With a fiber system, there's no electronics from the head-end, where we originate our signals, to the home. Nothing in between. So PG&E goes out on Linden Avenue, it doesn't affect our power supply, because there's no power supply anymore. It's no powering between the systems. So all those power systems we have in the field go away, which contributes to the reliability of the system. We do continue to investigate that product, price and evaluate. Al has lots of data on that product and pricing, and in fact, we're still evaluating maybe the better, a better way to do it with fiber. There's several different options. I know Al would love to talk to anybody about that that wants to listen, so, you know, we'd welcome that as a rebuild. But the cable plant does need to be rebuilt in some form, just to, you know, for reliability. A lot of the electronics we have in the field is no longer made. We have quite a few in stock, so we can replace them, but support is limited, so we need to make a move on that. Business development also meant commercial business. So staff, with your permission, hired a commercial sales representative that we employed for about nine months, and he went to a lot of commercial businesses, and we generated over $6,000 a month in new revenues before he left. And since he's left, we've got two more customers at $450 a month, so almost $7,000 a month has been generated. And now, a lot of it's word of mouth, but we do need to, we'd like to continue that effort. It worked very well for us, like to continue that effort in the next fiscal year as well. So we budgeted for that as well. That concludes my remarks for the cable department. Anything?
Steve, thank you. How long was that part-time sales...
About nine months, about ten months, nine to ten months.
And how many businesses, what was...
It was about thirty-five new businesses.
How many businesses did he/she visit?
Oh, over, probably over three, four hundred. I have a list of everywhere he visited. And we did also direct mail pieces to over fifteen hundred.
Any reason why, I mean, I think it's good what was accomplished, but any reason why it wasn't a higher percentage? Various reasons?
I think a lot of it was just, as we rolled it out, it was a lot of education for folks. I mean, there's a lot of small businesses that don't have a need for fiber-delivered technology. We have a hundred and seventy, there's about a hundred and seventy non-DIA customers out there that we got during the same time he was there. I can't attribute it all to his sales effort, but I think that they just don't see a need really for that commercial level of service yet. But now, word of mouth is spreading. People are finding that it's much more reliable as far as the level of service you get, the speed you get, and I think that that's starting to generate even more buzz and interest.
And can you reiterate, what's the level of the program, marketing program for residences? And bringing back customers?
So, for residents, we generally, we have some direct mail pieces, we have a refer-a-friend campaign, you know, you tell someone to join, you get $20 off, they get $20 off their bill, you get $20 off yours. We have, I've done the flea market. We don't really get a lot of business from the flea market, but we do get a lot of comments. We get a lot of positive, I'm looking here for the other campaigns that we have. We run monthly retention advertising on our cross-channel spots, and that generates some calls from people that might want to add services, and we think that's...
So we're probably not saturating the market of people that don't have our service?
Only through direct mail. We only do that through direct mail. And the part of that is that we had a sales force before that went out and did that, and the person that we hired was strictly for commercial business, so they did not, they did the MDUs, they did the treetops, we did Shelter Creek, we did some of those folks because we're dealing with a manager, we're not going door-to-door. That's generated some business as well, but that's not really, you know, saturating, like you say, saturating the audience out there.
I think that maybe the subcommittee, we could maybe should really sort of brainstorm again on how, because I see the little PSAs every once in a while, and they're neat because you can, you know the people that are talking, and then you see the PS, you know, you see the advertisements for Comcast and, what is it?
U-verse.
My God, I mean, it's just one level and the other. So I think we have, maybe not up to that level, but maybe a little more than just talking to, you know, a resident, you know, at the park or something.
Well, yes, I agree. And those ads that you're seeing from us are only, can be on our system, so they're only for folks that already have service. Where Dish, you know, is putting it on Channel 7, 5, and all those other services, and then there are competitions, so they're getting, they're getting, so you're right, I think some brainstorming would be good. But there are ways to do it, it's just, there's some cost involved.
And I know I've asked this in past hearings, are we investigating any areas to provide free Wi-Fi?
Actually, it was supposed to be part of my presentation, but we have free Wi-Fi right now at San Fran. And we were looking at doing maybe Wi-Fi in the park, that might be a nice enhancement to quality of life here in San Bruno. But we haven't, you know, we have, I think that's the only other place that we have Wi-Fi, right?
Right. We tried it downtown, and it worked fairly good, right next to where Starbucks was. They have their own Wi-Fi. We just stopped looking into the downtown center, but it's possible to wire up all the downtown centers and all the parks if the council wishes to have Wi-Fi around the area. It can be done, but not that expensive.
I don't want to end with a negative, but in this past year, we had a major outage. And was that a great learning experience? Because I was out for an entire day, and I sat in the corner and twiddled my thumbs because you can't do anything.
Right. Absolutely.
I mean, I sat there with my smartphone, but my God, I mean, we cannot...
It was a learning experience on several levels, and, yeah, that was a very, it impacted us quite large. Most of our customers, though, our commercial customers stayed up, some went down for a short time, but most stayed up. Our residential customers, and I know that you're a residential customer, that outage was out for several hours, but it did come back. And what happened was, was we took a lot of phone calls for folks over the next few hours, where the service was up, but they have routers and they have other devices, and they didn't reset those. So if you don't reset them, you know, our service was up, but that was a part of the learning experience too, because we need to educate folks to make sure that they do that when their routers come up.
I believe it was the city manager that told me what to do, and it worked. I believe it was the city manager that told me what to do, and it worked.
She's also a residential customer, by the way.
I was ready to go, I was ready to go to another city and buy a router.
No, no.
And lastly, I think another part of how we can promote our services is, you know, and I know it's expanded, is more, more community programs on Channel 1.
Okay.
You start getting the school activities and things on there, you'll, you know, families want to, yeah, families want to watch it. I mean, whether it's Posey Parade, or whether it's a, you know, girls softball championship game or something, you know, that's where you're going to get, you know, the word about for your viewers. So I know it's expanded, and I, if I want, if I need to know what's going on in San Bruno, I turn on, and that gal who I haven't met yet, she-
What's happening around town, yeah.
Yeah, she talks a mile a minute.
Yeah.
She, she says it all. So those are the things that I think we need, the, the brand needs to be distributed throughout the community so that they will say, oh, you know, this is us, you know, and, you know, and Comcast can never give that.
And I, and I, you're talking to the guy that, you know, started the program, so I, I totally agree with that. And, and I, I will say though, you know, I did, I'm pushing fiber, I know I'm talking fiber, but the buzz around fiber would, would generate a lot of San Bruno Cable positiveness, you know, if that's a word. It would, it would really, you know, be, it would sell itself, but.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Anything else, Steve?
The chair?
Michael?
I wanted to, first of all, just regarding the, some of the comments that Ken made regarding, you know, advertising and our ability to sort of keep up with, with the bigger carriers, it, it almost seems like we, we really have a different audience. And so, I mean, it's, it's one thing to spend a million dollars on a commercial that it's going to hit millions of viewers versus what we really can intend to do within our community. So I think, I think we're doing a pretty good job addressing the community. I don't think there's anybody in the city of San Bruno that doesn't know about San Bruno Cable. And to that point, I mean, there's really not much you can do to get the word out. I, I think that the service, the level of service that, that you provide is, is going to continue to be the big differentiator, and that's what I hear from, from my neighbors and everyone I speak to, is that, that that really is the differentiator. I mean, we're not innovators, I, I don't think that we can be innovators, but we're, we're keeping up, even though it's a struggle sometimes, and, but that, that service seems to be what, what makes us unique, and so I just want to say, you know, keep, keep up the good work on that front, and I think we'll, we'll be okay. I, I am a little concerned because of the fact that we do have a very limited audience, and it's always going to be a struggle to, I mean, it, it seems like that when we lose subscribers, we, we, we gain other subscribers, but we're just really trading the same pot, and we're, sometimes the same people that we get are people that we lost a year ago, they, you know, thought the grass was greener, just thought it wasn't, discovered it wasn't, and came back, so we're just going to keep recycling them, so it's, it's going to continue to be a, a struggle. So along those lines, I wanted to just ask about, you know, the, we've had problems before with keeping certain channels in the lineup, and I just wanted to get a feel for the, the risk that we see in, in the coming year with our costs increasing or our ability to maintain a full lineup of, of channels.
Right. It's a, it's a great question, and, and that feeds into what I wanted, a couple of things I wanted to mention as well. So this year, there was an experience that, that we had with Viacom. Viacom is negotiated through the National Cable Television Cooperative. We could go do a direct agreement with them, but we get a better price through the co-op. But we went down to zero wire, down to the wire with them this year. They wanted to take off 12 channels, they wouldn't agree to a, a, you know, reasonable rate, and a lot, and if you read any of the trades, a lot of companies dropped, a lot of small companies just couldn't afford it, and they just dropped, and they didn't make it, they didn't, you know, do the agreement. Some of those channels were MTV and VH1, maybe we could live without those, but not Nickelodeon and Nick Jr. and a lot of other channels that were on there, you know, we, we would, we need to keep those channels. And they, you know, threatened to call us, we were here, Al and I were here several nights at 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, threatening to turn us off, and just give us the word, we have to go to the head-end and turn those channels off until we can do a direct agreement. And it is, it is a problem, and, and the trades have expressed that and, and championed a lot of the small companies for actually saying, we're not going to, we didn't, we didn't fold, we stayed with the NCTC and, and hung in there, and, and we, we got a reasonably good agreement. We're going to be fighting with Scripps Networks coming up, they have a lot of channels too, and they're, they're going to be negotiating, we're actually in the middle of that negotiation now. As Connie probably let you know, the retransmission, broadcast channels that we have to pay retransmission fee, we're going to be, this year, we're going to be negotiating with three more of those. It's the end of the three-year agreement, when we, we did it last time, so there'll be some of those challenges as well. So, you know, there are challenges, but, and the other portion you mentioned too, Councilman, was the adding channels. And right now, with our capacity, we've taken our, our extra capacity, and we put it towards the internet, because we just, we want to build as much internet capacity as possible. And so we've done that, instead of adding channels, we've sort of traded that off to, to internet. We are shuffling channels, a lot of the programmers say, well, you know, take it off this tier and put it on another tier. So we're not losing channels, we're, we're not gaining many at this point, because we don't have the capacity to do so, and that's another reason for the rebuild. But it, you know, as you point out, it is challenging for small operators like us to, to continue to, you know, we know the rates are going to, the rates are going to go up, we haven't done a rate increase in three years, so, you know, we, and those rates still went up, you know, so we, we've been able to, I think we've been able to keep a lot of customers because of that, because they, they realize that they're getting a good deal. But that's absolutely something we need to be cognizant of.
And since you, you brought up rates, what would fiber do to the rates? Is that going to be something that's really going to drive them up, or can we stay fairly cost-neutral as we do that upgrade?
I think the additional subscribers that we would earn would, would, that revenue is going to, to keep us cost-neutral. I think it's going to be a, you know, it's going to take a couple of years to get up to that level, but I think that, that definitely would be a, a positive. And, you know, we are, there, we are the lowest rate in the peninsula right now, we're, our internet is $42. Comcast is 55 plus 7, if you have, if you have to rent a modem. So we're, we are well below the market in internet, and our, our television rates are lower than both the competitors in the area, as far as the cable competitors. So, and, you know, and we have the same, we have more channels than Astound, and a few less than Comcast, but, you know, we're in the same ballpark. So, yeah, we, we could, if we went fiber, I think, you know, we definitely have to rethink our pricing structure, because we can do, bandwidth prices are coming down, as you probably know. And we could probably sell a lesser service to somebody at the similar price of today, and then, you know, more robust services at a higher price for folks that want 100 megs or 50 megs or something, one of those types.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? The chair? Two things, just on, when we talked about the, and Ken already mentioned it, going out and recruiting for the businesses, I'm just curious what the return when we talk about it. So if for nine months, the person cost is X, I know you're saying it's 7,000 a month, but on the ratio of the return as far as the, how many visited, what actually we received, I'd like to see some number upcoming on that, not, not tonight, of course. And, and Steve, and Al as well, but Steve, you've been at the cable department for a few years, more than several.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not on the subcommittee, so I, I just, if you could briefly, what do you, being asked the question, what do you see as a state of the cable, San Bruno Cable Department?
The cable department, it, again, I mentioned it's a challenge right now, you know, it's being a small operator and a lot of technology out there, but as a, as a small player in the large world of, you know, of this, of this industry, we have been on the forefront at times of the technology. We were the first in the Bay Area to go all-digital. There, no one else, Comcast took two years after we did the all-digital program. We offered phone service before they did, you know, we were the first, the only system, I think, in the area, except for Stanford, that has an interdiction system where we can turn on and off, you know, service from, from our office without having to send someone out. We, you know, we have, we were one of the first to be fiber coax systems in the area too. So there's a lot of firsts for us, there's a lot of things that we've done first, it's getting harder to do that, because, you know, we're smaller and the technology's changing very quickly. But if you, you know, I, I sent some, some slides earlier that had, depicts what the nation, nationwide penetration of video subscribers as opposed to what San Bruno Cable's video subscriptions are, and we're really close to that 50% mark as far as customers in the, in the area. We, you know, television viewing is changing, and we need to adapt with it. We know that internet is becoming far more important than the tele, well, not the Superbowl, but the most television programming. I mean, television programming, sports still is ranked pretty high, but internet, I mean, folks, you know, they rely on internet for everything now. And so we've had to change our model and our thinking, where we were focused, oh my God, we're losing video subscribers, you know, this is, we got, we got, we got a problem here, let's see what we can do, to, wait a minute, we're gaining internets, and we need to make sure that we keep that service working as, as well as it can. So while it's a challenge, I mean, we, we need to adapt to what the industry's doing, and, and that's why, you know, Al attended several conferences this year to make sure that we are on that path. And we, you know, I, I know I'm going to push fiber once again, but with fiber, there's a lot less maintenance in the system. So there's an opportunity for us to repurpose some of our folks, to do more marketing, to do more, you know, sales or more customer service and standby, you know, service, where today, you know, we're challenged to do it all, you know, with what we have. And this is, this transition of video subscribers, you know, changing their habits and, and internet is, is challenging. But we think, you know, Al and I both firmly believe that the city has one of the best resources and assets that any other city has, and of course, we're a little partial to that, but, and that if, you know, if you put the money into it and we, and we, and we, we go forward with the system, you're going to have just a fantastic, you know, asset, continue to have that fantastic asset, and, and it'll make money like it, it's doing today. It is, you know, we are putting our money back into the system, but we are making money, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? I told Al when I came in tonight, I said, "Think fiber and not the kind you have for breakfast."
There you go.
So I'm all, I'm all for it, we have to figure a way to do it. I've been on the committee for, with Irene for many years, since I think Al was cranking the thing like this, but we've seen the evolution of, of what you've done, and also the evolution of all the challenges. And every time we turn around, there's something else that kind of bites us. But if we can get ahead of the game with some of the fiber, and I've gotten a lot of phone calls and emails from citizens, young tech-type, who say, "This is a wonderful city, but we need to get fiber here so I can do my job at home, so I can do this, so I can be, you know, compatible with other things." So we have to figure a way to do it, and I think we'll be, we'll be having some meetings here pretty quick to see what we can do. So, thank you very much.
And then promote and educate.
Absolutely.
Right.
And that will be a, probably a part of the job too, yes.